Okay, we may go. All our drinks now will up, please.
Please.
Hearing? The regular meeting of the Desires City Council for September the 4th, 2018 is called to order. Please be in joining in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
McKeever, here. Meyer, here. Wireball, here. Truca, here. Sack.
Here.
Foe, here. Shaw, here.
Before you, you have the minutes from the August 21st, 2018 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept these minutes.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Wireball, to accept the August 21st, 2018 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Is there anyone who would like to address council this evening? No one? Moving on to communications and petitions.
We have one letter here just from the Ohio Department of Transportation addressed to city council and dated August 23rd. The Ohio Department of Transportation updates the statewide transportation improvement program on a biannual basis. One of the first steps of updating this STIP is to meet with local officials to share a program, a list of projects, and collaborate on transportation concerns in our communities. This step is known as the World Consultation Process. You will go at www.dot.state.oh.us backslash divisions, backslash planning, backslash pages, backslash publications dot aspx. ODOT is in the process of developing the 2020 to 2023 STIP and would like to invite you to attend the World Consultation Open House on Wednesday, September 12, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Ohio Department of Transportation, 906 Clark Avenue, Ashland, Ohio, 44805, in the main conference room. The meeting will be an open house format to enable you the opportunity to arrive at your convenience. We look forward to meeting with you and discussing how we may partner together to find solutions for the transportation concerns in our region. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact Leslie Farley, District Planning Engineer, at 419-207-7170 or by email at Leslie.Farley@dot.oh.gov. We look forward to meeting with you respectfully, Howard P. Hubner, District Deputy Director of ODOT. And that is, this has to be accepted and filed.
Okay, I need a motion to accept and file this.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Meyer. All those in favor accepting this letter from the Ohio Department of Transportation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on to our standing committee reports. Mr. Wireball, would you like to get us started, please?
Sure. Desires City Council Joint Regular Committee meeting met Thursday, August 23rd, 2018. We began at 6:00 p.m. Members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Truca, got here a little late, and Monica Sack, Doug Foote, and Andrew Shaw. Desires City Joint Regular Committee's meeting was called to order by Wireball at 6:00 p.m. There was no public participation and the order of committee business was the Service Committee beginning at 6:00 p.m. Those members present were Doug Foote, Andrew Shaw, Bruce Truca, and Dan Wireball, IP Chair. Codified ordinance 91502, users outside city limits. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner distributed a spreadsheet showing that if the city were to charge water users outside city limits the same rates as city residents, it would lose $52,000 a year. However, if the city takes over the county water in sewer district as planned, it would bring in an extra $65,000 annually for a net gain of $13,000, beginning in 2020. The administration is currently in negotiations with the county commissioners for a transfer of the district to the city in 2019, which would include a nine-month period after which either party could opt out of the agreement. It was noted that legislation is under consideration in the State House that could force municipalities to charge the same rates for utilities outside city limits as charged inside the city. The administration is preparing letters to be sent to prospective water customers outside the city, offering the utility at one and a half times the rate inside the city, which is the current rate. The matter was continuing. Second up was codifying ordinance 951.01, utility service extensions conditions. Law Director Robert Ratliff observed that the perception incorrectly exists in the community that property owners living outside city limits would be subject to city annexation upon hooking up to city water. He distributed a draft amendment of codifying ordinance 951.01, making it clear that the ordinance does not apply to water service. Foote made a motion requesting legislation to do so, amend the ordinance with a second by Truca. Motion passed by voice vote. Amendment of Airport Bid Resolution. Wagner explained that resolution number 206, 2018, authorizing Crawford Murphy Tilly Incorporated to apply for an FAA grant and to advertise for bids and to enter into contract for maintenance and repairs at the airport needs to be amended to change the cost not to exceed figure from 150,000 to 165,000 and to change the city contribution from $7,500 to $8,200. Wagner explained that the project had to be rebid to remove replacement of the rotating beacon as the cost of cracked ceiling in the taxiways was higher than anticipated. Foote made a motion to request legislation to amend the resolution with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. Wireball recessed Service Committee at 6:23 p.m.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Wireball regarding the Service Committee report? None? Okay, we'll move on to Public Lands and Buildings meetings, Mr. Wireball.
Oh, yeah. Public Lands and Buildings began their meeting at 6:23 p.m. Members present were Bruce Truca, Doug Foote, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. ORDC Grant Administration for an Arch. Mayor Jeff Reiser noted that with the city's bicentennial coming up in 2021, an arch extending over Sandusky Avenue could be a way to commemorate the event. State grants are available to study the feasibility of such project at no cost to the city. Legislation was recently passed to have the Ohio Regional Development Corporation administer another state grant for the building of a stage in Shine's Arch Park. After a discussion, that includes the cost of engineering, building, and maintaining an arch, the grant process, and the possibility of installing lights on a water tower, Foote made a motion to request legislation authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with ORDC to administer an ODNR grant to study the feasibility of erecting an arch in the city with a second by Truca. Motion passed by voice vote. Next up was the Mary Street Properties. Water distribution garage, the city property at 301 West Mary Street and the nearby vacant lot on the east side of Spring Street have been appraised for $64,166.67 and $16,333.33, respectively, for a total of $80,500. Meanwhile, the water distribution garage at 2037 Marion Road has been appraised for $390,000. With operations at the garage being relocated to the former ODOT facility on West Irving Street and the city not utilizing the Mary Street Properties, Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner sought direction from council on what to do with the properties. After a discussion on whether to bid out the Mary Street Properties together or separately, a consensus emerged to bid them out or sell together. Committee members then decided to set a minimum bid of 90% of the appraised value for the Mary Street Properties as well as the property on Marion Road. McKeever made a motion to request legislation authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bid the sale of the properties at 301 West Mary Street and separately the sale of the city property at 2037 Marion Road, each with a qualified minimum bid of 90% of appraised value. Foote seconded the motion, which passed by voice vote. Wireball recessed Public Lands and Buildings Committee at 6:57 p.m.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the Public Lands and Buildings meeting? None? Thank you. Moving on to Finance. The Sack.
Finance Committee met at 6:57 p.m., 7:02 p.m. Members present, Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and Monica Sack, Chair. Number one, the amendment of Airport Bid Resolution. Myers made a motion to approve the Service Committee's request for legislation to amend resolution number 206-2018, authorizing Crawford Murphy and Tilly to apply for an FAA grant and to advertise for bids and enter into contract for maintenance and repairs at the airport to change the cost not to exceed figure from 150,000 to 165,000 and to change the city contribution from $7,500 to $8,200. Shaw seconded the motion, which passed by voice vote. Number two, ORDC Grant Administration for Arch. Wireball made a motion to approve the Public Lands and Buildings Committee's request for legislation authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with the ORDC to administer an ODNR grant to study the feasibility of erecting arch in the city. Myers seconded the motion, which passed by voice vote. Number three, appropriations. Auditor Joyce Schiffer reported that the following appropriation needs to be made. A, from unappropriated funds in the Fire Levy Fund slash Fire Department slash 25 Capital Outlets, $35,000 for the city's share of grants applied for. Myers made a motion to request legislation making appropriations with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. Number four, Sack recessed the Finance Committee at 7:02 p.m.
Any questions or comments regarding the Finance Committee minutes? None? Moving on. Health and Safety Committee, Mr. Myers.
Health and Safety met Thursday, August 23rd, 2018, 7:02 p.m. to 7:09 p.m. Members present, Mark McKeever, Bruce Truca, Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Number one, crosswalks. Myers distributed photos of crosswalk signage to be considered for the pedestrian crosswalk on the east and west sides of Washington Square on Mansfield Street and on North Walnut Street, east of the county courthouse. He suggested existing signage in the square has been there so long that it goes unnoticed and noticed that the county has expressed a willingness to share in some of the costs for new signage by the courthouse. Additional locations for improved crosswalk signage were also discussed. The matter is referred to the Traffic Commission. Myers recessed the Health and Safety Committee at 7:09 p.m.
Any questions or comments?
I actually have a comment for that.
Yes?
That is a very, very great idea. And my reason I say that is I was riding with somebody in the car the other day right by the courthouse as the officer that was checking people in was coming out commanding his shift and walking through the crosswalk. And he started walking across the crosswalk. And they're like, geez, he could have paid attention before he started crossing the street. Like, no, technically you need to watch because he has a right of way in that crosswalk and you ought to stop for him. So it must be a top-down thing. It might not just be signage as much as maybe being instructed properly how to drive around crosswalks.
Okay, and also another comment this weekend, I was back and forth through the square several times, and really a big thank you to the fire department. They were out there this weekend with the booths gathering money for muscular dystrophy and did quite well, so I heard, from the grapevine anyway. But they had some signs that they had put up down by where Old Romanoff used to be and there in front of the courthouse, and they were back out of the flow of traffic and everything. And it's amazing how much that does catch your attention. So, you know, this I think is a good idea for us to proceed with this. And I think people like me that are used to just going through the square and making my turns and everything, it does get your attention. So something new at least will be out there maybe for the first time and remind them they need to slow down and be careful about that.
Kudos, Kevin. Good job.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Myers, would you like to continue?
Yeah. I don't know, for public participation, there was none. Item five, Law Director Rob Ratliff requested an executive session of city council to discuss details of security arrangements and emergency response protocols where disclosure could be expected to jeopardize the security of the public body or public offices, ORC Section 121 dot 22 G6. McKeever made a motion that at this time, city council adjourns into executive session with all available elected officers of the Desires City Administration and the Service Safety Director available to discuss details of security arrangements and emergency response protocols where disclosure could be expected to jeopardize the security of the public body or public office, ORC Section 121 dot 22 G6. Myers repeated the motion verbatim and asked for a second to the motion. Foote seconded with the motion. Roll call, vote McKeever yea, Foote yea, Shaw yea, Myers yea, Wireball yea, Truca yea, Sack yea, nays none. Motion carried. Love announced that council adjourned into executive session at 7:10 p.m. McKeever made a motion to adjourn executive session, followed by a second by Foote. Roll call, McKeever yea, Foote yea, Shaw yea, Myers yea, Wireball yea, Truca yea, Sack yea, nays none. Motion carried. Love announced that council adjourned executive session at 7:17 p.m. There was no report. And item number six, Myers asked for a motion to adjourn the Joint Regular Committee, motion by Wireball, and seconded by Sack to adjourn at 7:17 p.m. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, Traffic Commission. We have no Traffic Commission minutes for this evening, but does anyone have any traffic questions? Mr. McKeever?
Yes, I've been approached by several people, and I've also noticed this, out on East Mansfield at the Stetser Road intersection, the westbound traffic trying to make a left-hand turn onto Stetser cannot make a left-hand turn, especially at 3:35 p.m. until about 4:30 because of there's no left turn. And I've had many people who-
Why can't they make a left turn?
Because the traffic won't let them.
Incoming traffic from Timken people leaving work, other people coming back into Desires.
When they're, the westbound traffic coming in-
You still can't make a left turn.
But they get backed up where these, I'm just saying.
Yeah. What I learned throughout is that you occupy the intersection, the light turns, or you make a left turn.
I, but I'm just, I'm just addressing.
I understand you get back up, but-
They're complaining about-
You should treat it as one part through every area.
But that's the problem. They're complaining that there's like five or six cars.
We should put it on the agenda for traffic.
Right. I just wanted to bring that up, if there could be possibly a left turn signal for like two cars, you know? There's some where you have the trip is two cars back-
Sure.
And it would be like at the end of the light.
Yeah.
That could, you could look at the possibility.
I haven't heard that complaint from anybody.
Well, I've been, I've been addressed since the last meeting three times on that. So I, and I, I've observed it also.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure, yeah.
Getting off work there.
I'm sure it can be an issue. I'm not saying it's not an issue.
Right. I just wanted to bring that up.
We'll go to the rest of the Traffic Commission, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the Traffic Commission? Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Report to city officers. Mayor Reiser?
Yes, no formal report tonight. I do want to mention a couple things. We had very good response from our first Mayor's Roundtable show, produced and directed by Mr. Gary Hess. And the second one is now history. It's on YouTube, it's on Access Channel. I was able to watch it Sunday with the grandkids there. They got a big kick as fast as they can on TV. Our guests were Kelly Patterson from our administrative assistant talking about the Community Union Bureau, and Mr. Ross Dash talking about what his own E-Director does. And so I think it was informative. I think it's well worth watching. If anyone has a topic for future shows, we'll try to be relevant with what's coming on in the city. If you have a topic you want to see addressed or a guest that you'd like to see on, just call up Mayor's Office or shoot an email to us. The other thing I wanted to mention was Congressman Jordan was in town. We had lunch with, nice lunch with Congressman Jordan and staff. Just to remind people that the congressman does have an office in town that's staffed two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. So if you have trouble or you have an issue with the VA, the EPA, the IRS-
Social Security.
Social Security, they're here to help. So we're very fortunate to have, have the reps here. They do an excellent job and another carrot about the district that they serve. All right, that's all for today. Thank you, Madam President.
So there is a link on the city website page-
Yes.
-to go see these interviews that you've done.
Right. And you can also go to the City of Desires YouTube channel, and then it's on at 2:00 and 7:00 on the Access Channel every day but-
Tuesday.
Tuesday, every day is Tuesday.
That's 10:21.
That's, yes, that's 10:21.
Okay.
But we're still not live? No, we still have an issue with Spectrum and-
Well, I keep telling my mom, you know.
It's on at 10:00 in the morning and 2:30 a.m.
We're working on it. We're still working on it.
Yeah. Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, moving on. Law Director, Mr. Ratliff.
Thank you, Madam President.
Wait a minute, what did I do? I skipped the Service Director.
Oh, I have something, the Service Director.
You have something from the Service Director.
Yes, the Service Director. City Hall lots are going to be paid, milled first, then paid beginning Thursday. There will be access to City Hall at all times, so you will be able to get to the utility office to pay your bills. It's very important, so. And then we also have a deer lottery coming up. So if you're interested in entering the city-owned property deer lottery, please contact the Mayor's Office to be added to the list. The drawing will be held on Tuesday, September 25th at 10:00 a.m. and the winners will be notified.
And I usually see good response to that.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Time for the deer to run the cover.
Yeah. Any questions regarding the Service Safety Director's report?
Well, I do-
What, yes?
Is spectacular happening this year?
Yes, spectacular will be happening.
Okay, well, I heard rumor that maybe it wasn't so.
Nope, it will definitely be happening this year.
Okay, and, and-
And I don't have the dates in front of me, but it will be, I believe, the third Saturday.
Something like that.
No, I, no, we usually, I'll have to get the calendar.
Well, so we have a rain date, yeah.
Well, maybe that might be your question.
No, he's on the old park this year, same as always.
That might be the question you really want to ask. Be the end of the occasion of it.
I believe, yeah, I don't quote me, but it's usually the third Saturday with a rain date the following week. It will, it will be in the future.
At Almanoff?
At Almanoff Park, yes.
At Almanoff Park.
There you go. So we, it's been so successful and we did, you know, we want to make sure that it continues. You've been involved in a bad year, and all of you better, I'm sure, with kids. It's a lot of fun and it's a great event for the community as well.
Yeah, there was some discussion going on. Just happened to be this morning when I stopped in, so, yeah, it's underway.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions regarding anything to do with the Service Director?
Oh.
Mr. McKeever?
Yes. I just want to clarify, I have a couple other constituents ask about the streetlights, and I said that's handled by AEP, and they come in periodically and that how-
Well, they also, they ask residents if they see a streetlight out to, if you go on the streetlight, there's a number right there, phone number and a number of the light. Call them and they are very good about coming up quickly, so.
Okay.
And that's, that's not a bad thing to remind people of every once in a while. Maybe we can get that on Access also.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
That's a good, good point.
Especially as it starts to get dark a little bit earlier.
Very good point, yeah. Days are getting shorter.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, now, Law Director, Mr. Ratliff.
Wow.
Now I know you've heard that before.
Thank you, Madam President. No report, a couple of quick things. Moving night, the final moving night of the year is this Friday in the park. It'll be a little earlier than the last one, but this Friday. One referral, the city owns a small lot on Warren Street, is surrounded by other land bank properties, and there may be some potential there for some local use of that property. So I'd like to refer the consideration of transfer of that property to Public Lands and Buildings to the land bank.
So that lot has to go to Public Lands and Buildings and Finance?
Really? That one has to go to Public Lands and Buildings? Because it would just be a transfer in the land bank.
Okay, just a transfer, okay.
If it chose to do it that way.
Okay, then I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Truca, to refer that Warren Street block to Public Lands and Buildings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion passed. Thank you very much.
And last week, speaking of land bank, if you travel in the 900 block of Rogers Street this week, you may notice a ray of sunshine falling down from the skies because there is some clear space there now. It's been a very, very long journey. In fact, it was one of the very first things mentioned to me when I first took this job five years ago or so. Was, when are you going to tear those houses down?
And that was Sunday, they started.
Well, I said, well, give me a year, but it took a little while. But they started that over the weekend and they're, they're pretty well squished right now, and I think it's a lot of locks there in the next couple of days.
Yeah, they are.
Congratulations.
Yes. Yeah, we're all so happy for that, yes. The, yes, I was out on my front porch Monday morning and I thought, what in the world is that noise? So I hopped in my car and drove around the block, and sure enough, they were attacking the second house. So they're down. Mr. Myers?
On behalf of several of the residents in that area, the contact committee, I just want to share their thank you for your hard work and diligence in helping that become a reality.
Well, I appreciate it. There's, there's a lot more. There's a lot more to do, so we continue to work on that. We have boards, Mr. McKeever. There's a lot of neighborhoods that are suffering from that kind of light, and I think it's an important, important goal. I appreciate the support that this council gives us in trying to rectify those. I mean, without the, this council's support and putting Mr. Grove in place to go out and look at these things, we wouldn't be able to get anything done. And so, you know, I very much appreciate you guys indulging my, you know, my desire to tear down some of these really blighted houses.
Pretty good. Anything else? Okay, moving on, we have the auditor's statement of cash position dated August 31st, is in your pocket for you to look over, and we will accept that and discuss it at next committee meeting. Also, or council meeting, the other thing that you have in here is a, some referrals to Finance Committee. Since the auditor isn't with us this evening, would you read that, Todd, please?
These are the referrals for September 4th, for Thursday, September 6th. Number one, need to create two new funds and necessary appropriations for credible FEMA grants that the Fire Department applied for that have been approved. Fire chief will provide the necessary numbers. These grants are for hose nozzles and new air packs. Number two, we need to create the 2019 Crime Victims Assistance Grant Fund and the 2019 Victims of Crime Act Grant Fund and the necessary appropriations for each. The new grants start October 1st. And number three, we'll need to make transfers within the general fund to cover the additional costs of the pool repair. Details to follow, so we need to, we need to refer appropriations, fund creations, and transfers to fund it.
Okay, the, the new funds that need to be created, the first two, we've been informed by FEMA that they must be their own fund. We cannot process them through the general fund as the same with, we've always had separate funds for the crime victims' position. There are two funds that support that. We receive money from the state and-
From the federal?
Government for those, for that, okay. So I need a motion then to do these, create these four different funds as specified, plus all the categories and line items underneath them.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Shaw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. And then I need a motion on the transfer we'll have for the additional cost of the pool repair. We'll have all the details for you on Thursday evening for that.
So moved. Second.
Who was that? Kevin? Mr. Myers and Mr. McKeever. Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever, for the transfer within the general fund to cover the additional costs of the pool repair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, and the necessary appropriations. I don't know, do we have, we don't have any appropriations yet to do for the crime victims I don't know, do we have, we don't have any appropriations yet to do for the crime victims, because we don't have those numbers yet. They don't come out with those the last actual moment before they give us the money. Okay, so I need a motion then for appropriations for the federal FEMA grants. I think there are several of them.
So moved. Second.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion. I thought I heard somebody else.
Okay. Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by...
Second.
Mr. Shaw, to make the necessary appropriations for the federal FEMA grants and the fire department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
The hydraulic was so...
I know.
What I did, I thought...
Motion passed. Okay. Next, we have the Treasurers' Report for June 30th. It was given to you at the last meeting. We need a motion to accept and file this Treasurers' Report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Ms. Sack.
No.
That was you?
Yep.
Motion by Mr. Fote, second by Ms. Sack. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. We have nothing from Police Chief and the Fire Chief. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor, to accept the city officers' reports, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is the time where we have visitors' input regarding reports of standing or special committee status of city officers. Does anyone wish to address counsel this evening? No one? Okay, moving on. For consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We've got five pieces, two ordinances, and three resolutions. Ordinance number 38-2018, amending and supplementing section 951.01, entitled utilities service extensions conditions of chapter 951, entitled annexation policy, of part nine, entitled streets utilities and public services code, of the codified ordinances of the City of Bussiris, Ohio. That is referred back to service. Ordinance number 39-2018, amending and supplementing ordinance number 57-2017, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2018, by appropriating from unappropriated fire levy funds the sum of $35,000 to the capital outlay line item within the Fire Department category, within the fire levy subparagraph, and declaring an emergency. That is referred back to finance. Resolution number 232-2018, amending resolution 231-2018, authorizing and directing Crawford Murphy and Tilly, Inc. on behalf of the City of Bussiris to apply for a federal aviation administration FAA grant and to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the furnishing of the necessary labor, materials, and equipment for the maintenance, slice repairs enumerated herein at the Port Bussiris Crawford County Airport, 2254 Ezekiel Road, Bussiris, Ohio. Set cost not to exceed $165,000, with the city's contribution not to exceed $8,200, and declaring an emergency. That's referred back to Service Committee. Resolution number 233-2018, authorizing and directing the Mayor of the City of Bussiris, Ohio, on behalf of said city to enter into a contract with the Ohio Regional Development Corporation, 120 and a half South Fourth Street, Koshakton, Ohio, 43812, to administer an ODNR grant to study the feasibility of erecting an arch in the City of Bussiris. That's referred back to public lands and buildings. And finally, resolution number 234-2018, authorizing and directing the Bussiris Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bussiris, Ohio, to advertise for bids for the sale of three parcels, 301 West Mary Street, parcel ID 080050033.000, 301 West Mary Street, East side of Spring Street, parcel ID 080050027000, and 2037, Mary Road, parcel number 090001147000, located in the City of Bussiris. Said parcels being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes, and to enter into a purchase agreement with the highest invest bidder, reserving the right of the City of Bussiris to reject bids less than the minimum acceptable to have 90% of the appraised value, and declaring an emergency. That's referred back to public lands and buildings.
Okay, thank you very much. I need a motion to accept this as a first reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Truca, second by Mr. Fote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. Ordinance number 38-2018 is referred back to Service Committee. Ordinance number 39-2018 is referred to Finance. Resolution number 232-2018 is referred to Service. Resolution number 233-2018 is referred to Public Lands and Buildings. Resolution number 234-2018 is referred to Public Lands and Buildings. This is the time for public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone care to address counsel this evening? No one? Do we need a recess?
No.
I would like, I just want to reiterate tragically on ordinance 38-2018, that I think that's a mistake we're making. We're already, you have to be contiguous to the, to the city and water. That's two reasons that make you have to annex. Now we're giving them, we're giving them, they have to have three reasons before they can annex, so I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot, so. Right?
I'm not understanding that at all. I'm sorry, that's why there's this blank look here.
Okay.
You're talking about ordinance number 38...
38, yeah.
-2018.
Where now they have to have sewer and water before they can annex, plus be contiguous to the city.
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Ratliff.
That was always the law.
That was, that's what it's always been.
Yeah, so we're just clarifying.
We're just, yeah, we're just clarifying that if you're only getting water, you do not have to. Even if you are contiguous, you do not have to be annexed.
But if that's how it always was, why would we have to change it?
Well, people were asking for clarification of what it was we were doing, and it sort of said it by omission rather than specifically. And that's why this was done, to show it as a specific exclusion from annexation, is if you are only getting water and are contiguous, you are not required to annex. If you're getting water and sewer and are contiguous, then we...
Well, we don't even do that, so.
Well, now, let's say that in the past, that has not been enforced, okay? So, you know, we answer for our forefathers back however many years ago.
And we can correct that, but we don't want to.
We haven't as of yet, no.
Okay. I just, yeah, I'm just, just wanted to make it clear.
Okay. Committee reports on pending legislation. Service Committee?
Service Committee is favorable to ordinance 38-2018, extending water to outside city moments without annexation. And it's also favorable, Service Committee, resolution 232-2018, and as airport improvements to the runway.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable to ordinance 39-2018 appropriation.
Okay, thank you. And Public Lands and Buildings?
Public Lands and Buildings is favorable to resolution 233-2018, the ORDC grant administration, and also favorable to resolution 234-2018, sale of city properties.
Okay, I need a motion then to accept these reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor of accepting your reports say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Prefer the consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third readings, I propose ordinance number 38-2018, which is the utility service extensions regarding water. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
No.
Ordinance number 38-2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 38-2018?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
No.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ordinance number 39-2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 39-2018?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ordinance number 39-2018 is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed resolution number 232-2018, the airport improvement amendment, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Shaw?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Resolution 232-2018 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution number 233-2018, which is the ORDC grant administration for, the what?
The arch.
The arch, okay. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved. Second.
Fote?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 233-2018.
Do I have a motion to adopt proposed resolution 233-2018?
So moved.
Second.
Fote?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Resolution 233-2018 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution 234-2018, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Resolution number 234-2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 234-2018, which is for the sale of city properties?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Resolution 234-2018 is duly adopted. Thank you. Moving on, any unfinished business anyone would like to bring up this evening? Mr. McKeever?
Yes, alright. I remember the mayor stating that they were going to send out letters on the water rates to potential customers. Has that been drawn up yet?
Yeah, I think they went out, they went out Friday, yes.
Okay, I would just, just a question.
Should they ever have them in their hands tomorrow?
Okay.